Good evening. I'll call to order this meeting of the Salem City Council. It's a joint city council and Salem Planning Commission work session on housing production strategy. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Councilor Stapleton is absent. Councilor Nishioke?
Here.
Councilor Phillips?
Here.
Councilor Gwynn?
Here.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilor Hoy?
Here.
Councilor Nordike?
Here.
Councilor Varney?
Here.
Mayor Hoy?
Here.
And then for the Planning Commission, Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Truitt?
Here.
Commissioner Faat?
Here.
Commissioner Heller?
Here.
And Commissioner Slater is absent. Commissioner Tagen is absent. And Commissioner Vier Brindel?
Here.
We have quorum.
All right. Well, welcome, everybody. And if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's good to see you, Planning Commissioners. Good to have you here. Councilor Nishioke, do we have a motion to approve the special meeting agenda?
Yes, I move to approve the special agenda, a special meeting agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Nishioke, second by Varney. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Nishioke?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Gwynn?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Nordike?
Aye.
Councilor Varney?
Aye.
Mayor Hoy?
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Councilor Nishioke, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. All right. That takes us into our discussion item on Salem's housing production strategy. And we have Ms. Eunice Kim here to lead us through that. I'll turn it over to her.
Turn that button on, hit that button. There you go.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Mayor, City Council. Thank you so much for being here for our joint work session on the housing production strategy. I'm Eunice Kim, the Long Range Planning Manager for the City of Salem. And tonight, I'm going to be handing off the presentation to Beth Goodman with Echo Northwest. They are the consultant team that is leading this work with the City of Salem, hired by DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And we're really excited to have Beth here tonight.
Will you bring up the presentation?
Hello. Thank you for having me here.
Welcome.
The computer seems to be being driven by somebody else.
Yeah. The guy in the back row there behind you. So he can take care of everything.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. So as we go through this presentation, Mr. Mayor, is it okay if people ask questions about what's being presented as I go along?
Whatever works for you, works for us.
Okay. I'm just going to be a little bit fast because we have a lot of slides, a lot of content, a lot of it that you know already. So I'm Beth Goodman with Echo Northwest. We are your consultant here for the housing production strategy. And I'm just going to step through this. So what we're talking about tonight is the housing production strategy, discussing your unmet needs, talking about a little bit of the data and a little bit of the community input that we've been getting so far, discuss factors influencing the feasibility of housing development, and ask for your input about our understanding of housing needs and potential actions under consideration for the HPS. So essentially, what we're asking you is, is what we're saying, does it make sense to you? Do we seem to be going in the right direction as we're continuing this work? Pardon me. There we go. All right. So you're already doing a lot for housing. I'm sure that that's no surprise to you. What you've got going on, a little bit of it right now, is you've got some, you recently surplus some land for cottages for low-income seniors that was sold for a nominal price, I believe, to the United Way on the Market Street location. Your system development charge waivers for affordable housing and accessory dwelling units, ADUs, you already do that. The R-Salem project rezoned a lot of land to allow for more multifamily and mixed-use development. Your safety and livability bond is providing funding for affordable housing. You've got tax exemptions for multi-unit development projects already. And the Housing Authority does numerous projects. You've got a lot more than that going on, but that's just to name a few. So we're going to be working in that world. We call this a housing production strategy, but it's really about housing at all income levels, both for producing new housing, preserving existing housing, and looking at housing opportunities for people experiencing homelessness, as well as housing stability, so avoiding gentrification and displacement. The HPS, the Housing Production Strategy, is an eight-year action plan that starts with the idea of what Salem's unmet housing needs are, looks at the barriers to developing and preserving housing that's affordable to Salem's residents, and from those barriers says what policies are needed to encourage housing, to support housing that meets Salem's needs, of all these types of different actions, such as financial incentives and funding strategies, regulatory changes, et cetera. So that's the playbook, the sandbox we're playing in right now. You did a housing needs analysis back in 2014. I know you did because Echo Northwest did it for you. It addressed a lot of issues related to buildable lands, and it resulted in the rezoning that you did in the R-Salem project. What we found is that you have now enough land for multifamily housing, but you didn't back when we did the project. It resulted in actions that led to more housing actions, hmm, options, streamlining the approval process, eliminating parking requirements, rezoning land and more. That's another way of saying you've also done a lot around land use for housing. It was adopted in 2022. So the housing production strategy is a new requirement as of 2019. What it requires you to do is refine your understanding of housing need. So we're bringing refreshed data into this because when we did the housing needs analysis, it was 2013 data and before. Then we look at an evaluation of the gaps in your existing policies and identify and evaluate potential actions to fill those gaps, as we'll be discussing this evening. And then, at the end, we do an assessment of taking together all the strategies that you have existing and that we're talking about in the housing production strategy. Do they help achieve fair and equitable housing outcomes? Do they contribute to more fair and affordable housing outcomes? So in the housing production strategy, here we've got a simplified version of the schedule. We're working on the housing needs analysis now, and we're coming towards the end of that here in summer 2024. We're also analyzing market opportunities, so doing some financial feasibility analysis about development of different types of multifamily and mixed-use housing in some of your new zoning designations. And that will include conducting interviews with developers to make sure that our assumptions and our understandings are correct. We'll be developing your actions here in the spring through winter on into early next year. And then we have a deadline of May 2025 to have the housing production strategy complete. So we'll have a complete adoption-ready strategy at that point. Before I go on, are there any questions?
Councilor Gwynn?
Are you going to share these slides? I can't read either of the screens.
Yes. Are there other questions?
So we are looking at housing that's affordable at all income levels. As we discussed, this is, well, as we will discuss, this is about housing affordability at a wide range of income levels. So just a little bit of information to start us off. Your median sales prices have increased substantially since 2012, 173% increase. At the same time, rents increased by 68%, but household income only increased by 51%. And so the point here, that's the obvious point, is that housing costs are growing faster than income, both for rents as well as for sales prices. This is true almost all across Oregon. Very few cities are we seeing a trend that's any different than that. Your population is aging, with the largest growth being in people 70 years and older. And as we look out 20 years, you see continued growth in people 60 years and older. There will be the largest growth, largest group that is growing. Your housing needs are also changing because your population is becoming more diverse. So people who are of two or more races and Latino of any race are the two fastest-growing groups in Salem. So with that change in demographics, you get change in housing needs, both from racial and ethnic demographic changes, as well as from age demographic changes. Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Thank you. Just to go back, you were saying that the percentages of increase were similar in Oregon. What about in the nation?
Well, the nation's not one housing market, but certainly on the coasts, we're seeing these kind of problems. We're increasingly hearing these kind of problems from Intermountain West. I think when you look at the South and the Midwest, the story may be a little bit different, but I don't personally do a lot of work in those areas. So we're getting similar questions from Intermountain West, like Idaho and Utah, Nevada, other states. Yes, ma'am. Okay. So this slide is talking about financial attainability. I'm going to take a moment or two to go over this. So what we're showing here is that in Yamhill, not Yamhill, I knew I'd do that, in Marion-Polk Counties, the, for a household of four, the area median income is $89,000. The area median income for a smaller household is going to be lower than that, but we're talking an example of a household of four. So $89,000. That household can afford about $2,230 a month in housing costs, in rent or sales prices, and can afford a house of between $225,000 and $270,000.
We have a question.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Are these net prices or gross?
Could you be sure and pull the microphone over so they can get you on that? Just the neck of its line. There you go.
Okay. So are these net prices that you're using or gross?
Well, for rent, it is the cost of rent plus basic utilities like electricity and heating. For sales prices, it's mortgage, interest, insurance, and those same basic utilities.
And how about income?
Income, that is gross before taxes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So a household of four can afford about $2,230 a month in housing costs. So when we look at your average rent, at about $1,700 a month, including utilities, that household of four with the full area median income of 100%, they can afford that rent. But when you look at the median sales price, that household cannot afford that rent or sales price. Essentially, it requires 160% of area median income, or about $223,000 a year in income to afford the median sales price of $429,000. So obviously, some housing is sold for less than that, some is sold for more than that. This isn't newly built housing. This is looking at existing and newly built housing. When we look at these different income ranges, so below 60% of area median income is an income of about $53,000. That household can afford about $13,040 in monthly housing costs, and they can afford a sales price up to $160,000. So I doubt that there's very many, if any, sales prices for housing that they could afford, maybe manufactured housing possibly. And there's not any market rate rent that they could afford. So there'll be some rental units that are on the market at that low. But when you think of a household of four, you're talking about a two- or three-bedroom apartment. I'm willing to bet that there's not a lot of those affordable, like $1,300 a month, including rent and utilities. So housing as it's newly built, that is affordable at below 60% of area median income, that's typically income-restricted housing, so housing that is built with state and federal funds, for instance. So that's not built by the market. Not a whole lot of market-rate multifamily housing is built that's affordable at 80% of median family income. I expect that that starts to be, you start to be able to get the rents that you can support housing development above 80% of median family income. And some of the work that we're doing right now, which is not available right now, don't have all the information from it, we'll talk specifically about where market rate rents are for newly developed housing. So housing that's newly developed, that's affordable, is going to be affordable to these upper income levels, above 80% of median family income. And then when you start talking about newly built affordable or newly built single-family housing, it's going to be affordable to a portion of the population that has income above 120% of area median income. Of course, this doesn't account for accumulated wealth. We don't have data about that. And this doesn't account for debts. We don't have data about that. So the, it's better and worse in different ways. So when we look at the distribution of households in Salem, what we see is about 38% of your households have income below 60% of area median income, or below $53,000. About 9% have income between $53,000 and $67,000. 22% have income between $67,000 and $107,000, and 31% have income above $107,000. So a lot of your households currently can't afford market rate rents, especially for newly built housing. And a lot of your households can't afford newly built, single-family housing either. So that's the area that we're working in. So when we talk about affordability, we're talking about affordability across this whole So a little bit about affordability issues. So a household is said to be cost-burdened if they're spending 30% or more of their gross income on housing costs. If they're spending 50% or more of their gross income on housing costs, they're said to be severely cost-burdened. 37% of your households are spending 30% or more of their income on housing costs, and 19% are spending 50% or more of their income on housing costs. As we look at this between owners and renters, you see that renters, more than 50% of renters are cost-burdened, and 30% of your households who are renters are severely cost-burdened. So those households are in real trouble. That's shown in a lot of ways. It's reflective of the data that we just looked at about income distribution. We don't just think about housing needs based on income. We also think about them based on demographics and other considerations. So for instance, people experiencing houselessness for, whether it's temporary or chronically, alone or with children, they have housing needs that are different than other people in Salem. You have housing needs that are different for different racial or ethnic groups. We'll talk about that in a few moments. People over 65 years and older, people with disabilities, obviously, some of these groups have overlap among them. They need housing that's affordable. They need access to housing without discrimination. But they also need housing that meets the needs of their households. So each household has different needs, of course. You could spend quite a lot of time figuring out all the different needs. But if you have a larger household, it's going to need different housing, say a multi-generational household, than a senior household that's maybe two, one or two people. So we consider all of those different factors as we're thinking about this. Before I go on and talk a little bit about the public engagement we've done, are there questions about the housing need? This is a lot longer in the housing production strategy. Just trying to give you the highlights.
Questions?
Okay. So in what we just talked about, there's a lot of data that we have access to, but the data doesn't really tell us the whole story. So we need to contextualize that data with input from people here in Salem. You've done a lot of engagement up to this point, especially in things like the R-Salem Project, or your housing code amendments that you've done over the last few years. We're bringing what was learned into that. We have done some recent engagement, which we'll talk about the results of a little bit in a few moments, with some focus groups with different organizations, community meetings and events. We just finished a survey that was a general public survey that reached more than 500 people. Last week, we did a public webinar, and the market study is doing a number of developer interviews at this point. Here, up in the next few months, over the next year, we'll be meeting with community groups and the Equity Roundtable to discuss some of the same information and discuss potential actions. We'll be doing focus groups with market rate and affordable housing developers to talk about some of the actions we're talking about and make sure that they make sense in the context of what Salem is trying to do. We'll be coming back to you in the fall. We'll be doing another public webinar in the spring, and we'll be coming back to you again in the spring as well. So we've done some public engagement. There's a lot more that's coming up. So the community survey was done in four languages and had 539 responses. We'll talk about that in a few moments. The focus groups that we've done are with organizations that are serving traditionally underserved communities, such as people with disabilities. In-person events for communities of color and youth, I believe that those are things that staff have been taking on, and meeting with neighborhood land use chairs, community groups and other groups. So there's a lot of discussion that's going on, partially with your consultants, partially your staff carrying those discussions also. So what we've heard so far is you need affordable options at all income levels. That's not really all that surprising. What's, I think, very interesting is bridging gaps between landlords and tenants. And really, part of what that is, is some of your refugee communities say they don't have rental history, and they have to pay a higher deposit. Or you have different, unique needs of different tenants, and it's not clear what risks landlords are willing to take. So if landlords understood some of this more, would they be able to and would they be willing to change some of their practices? You have a need for ground floor units for people with disabilities, or priority for vacated first unit, first-floor units, people who are already living in the housing complex but have disabilities. So this will be one of the things that we're talking about, is what can Salem do to support housing that meets the needs of people with disabilities? You need a rehabilitation program to support major rehab of housing. Oftentimes, that's for ownership housing, low-income ownership housing, could also be around rental housing as well. And there's some specific concerns about maintenance problems by renters who are just afraid to report or ask about the problems. So what is it that Salem could do to better facilitate those discussions? A little sample from the public survey responses. The very important factors in choosing housing, affordability, it's right up there. Physical condition of the building, that says to me that there are some physical condition problems, especially for the people who are responding to the survey, and that speaks to rehabilitation needs, as well as the type of housing. So looking for a wide range of housing, single-family homes, apartments, other types of housing as well. And then the challenges, finding housing, we're finding housing that you could afford to buy, finding housing that you can afford to rent, so affordability is still right up there, housing in good condition, and then staying in your home when rents are increasing. Those are the top four problems that we're seeing. All right. So we did a public webinar last week where we had about 30 attendees, and we asked some of the same questions in the webinar that we asked and we just presented about from the survey, and they were largely consistent with the results from the public survey. Some of the folks who participated in the webinar had taken the survey as well. And if you want to see a recording of the webinar, you can go to the link that will be in the PowerPoint that you'll be given. All right. So we're getting down to some more of the action, and we've got some questions for you about, but we have more talking to do before we can do that. All right. So how do you identify actions in the housing production strategy? Well, you start with an understanding of what the city's role is in housing development. You get development that can occur, the conditions under which development can occur, are when you've got land that's available, where the developer has control of the site with reasonable acquisition costs. You've got access to capital, so loans, equity investment, that kind of thing. You've got market feasibility, so you have to have sufficient demand that your rents and your sales prices are able to support a profitable project. And then you have to have public policy that allows the development to happen. So things like zoning, your density and your design requirements, all of those things must allow a developer to build a profitable project. And here, of course, we're talking about market rate development. The considerations are different when you're talking about income-restricted, affordable development. Not less complex, just different. So a city can directly influence public policy land, especially through infrastructure, and how much land is within the urban growth boundary and how it's zoned. Cities have limited influence on market feasibility, as we'll talk about a little bit. Certainly Salem is exerting some influence, or trying to, on market feasibility. And then cities are rarely in the role of providing capital. There are some exceptions to that, and we'll talk about those in a few moments. So we're keeping this in the back of our mind. City can't do everything. City has limited resources. So what is it that the city can do? So before we go on to that, what goes into making market rate rental housing development pencil? So you've got construction costs, your development costs, which include construction costs, land costs, planning and design costs, and carrying costs for things like your loans. And then you've got the development value. So once it's built, what is the value? So what kind of rents can you get? What kind of sales prices can you get? And here, we're showing a case where the expected value exceeds the development costs. So there's some profit to be made in this. Here, we're showing you an example of when rents are too low to support construction. Under this condition, well, let's say, under this condition, first of all, when you can get development to pencil, it's not clear if it would pencil without any city influence because in some cases, city actions, in some cases, those actions are the things that are allowing it to pencil. When you've got market rents that are too low to support new construction, that's a question of what is the city able to and willing to do to support construction of that? And I would say that, you know, what you're willing to do may well vary based on your, the city's, the community's goals and what you're trying to achieve. So how do you move the needle? You've got a lot of things that we just talked about. Can you reduce infrastructure costs? Can you expedite permitting, reduce fees, simplify development processes? Can the city acquire land and write down the cost of that land? You've certainly done that recently with the cottage housing for United Way. Can you reduce property taxes? So there's a lot more that a city can do on the development cost side than necessarily on the development value side, because there you're talking about reducing operational So when you're thinking about what goes into revenues and costs, we've called it here apartment rent, but it could also be sales prices. You've got other minor revenues that go into it. And your operating expenses, an awful lot of that is your debt service, the cost of operating the housing, your vacancy rate, where vacancy is an interesting one, the way that developers think about it. It's really not necessarily, hmm, I'm thinking about how to say that, it's an expense rather than a revenue that didn't happen. Like, I think of vacancy as forgone revenue, and that's not the way that developers think of vacancy. So it's an expense. If you have a high vacancy rate, obviously, you're going to have a harder time achieving a market feasible development. Your property taxes in there, and then your investor returns. It's really hard to say how much investors are expecting to return on. It's really hard to say how much investors are expecting to return on housing. It really varies on the type of investor. But, you know, it's more, you know, it's similar to what people are willing to consider sometimes with risky stocks. So a 7% to 12% return might well be considered a reasonable return. Sometimes it's going to be higher. If you have friendly investors who are interested in something that the project is trying to achieve, they may be looking at lower returns. Yes, ma'am? Sorry.
I was wondering about, oops.
Pull that microphone over.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So I was wondering about private equity buying up a lot of this, a lot of housing. Is that happening here?
I couldn't say so for sure, but I expect that is happening here.
Okay, so...
So you've got corporations who are buying up housing.
Right.
And less invested locally, so they're looking at larger returns and worrying less about rents being higher.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Certainly, that is a dynamic that we're seeing. The question is, is what can the city do about it? That's a hard one. All right, so when you think about balancing your affordability requirements and your tax abatements, so basically, when you have higher affordability requirements, that reduces the amount that a developer can earn back on their rents, seeing as that rent is a big part of the revenues, that can cause problems in having a feasible project. When you give a property tax abatement, for instance, that reduces the operating costs. That can make it easier for whoever is operating the housing to continue doing so in a market feasible way. So there's different levers. We're going to talk more about levers in a moment or two. In fact, we're going to talk about levers right here. I don't want to read all these levers off, because there's a lot of them, but I'll just pick out a few of them here. So one of the most significant levers is around site selection and land control. Whoever controls the land has quite a lot of power. So site acquisition and site control is a big lever, along with how the land is zoned, how you're doing your placemaking and your growth management. Your project design and permitting, those can certainly contribute to the feasibility if you have a longer permitting process or a more complex design process. Sometimes those can cause issues. Looking at things like permitting fees and system development fees, you've got reasons that you have those fees, but you want to make sure that they're aligned with what the city's larger goals are. Financing, here's where you've got a few grants and loans where the cities sometimes dip into financing. It may be a low-interest grant, sorry, low-interest loan, or an outright grant, and that's usually to achieve a specific outcome that the city is looking for. You've got your construction costs, so, you know, what's it cost to do parking? You're already looking at various parking reductions. Also, infrastructure costs, inspections, that kind of thing. And then operations, so how much of your development is rentable area? Are you offering tax abatements, those kind of things? Are there rent subsidies or tenant protections that affect operations? So these are all some of the kinds of levers that we can, and some of them certainly, I think, will be talking about in the housing production strategy. Before I go on to the state requirements, are there questions about that last chunk?
I am not seeing any.
Okay. So you're going to do a housing production strategy. What does the state expect of you? This is something that's in flux right now, as the state's making, doing rulemaking around this. But for what we understand now, strategies identified in your housing production strategy, the city of Salem is committing to try to implement them. It doesn't say that you're going to succeed in implementing them. Let's just take, I'm going to take a bond, because that's a particularly hard one. You guys already have a bond, probably won't be talking about one. But bonds often go up to a vote. If the city doesn't succeed with that, what is it to do? Well, you're going to be required to report on that to the state and work with the state to ensure that you have other actions in your housing production strategy that are addressing the need that the failed action would be addressing. So you're committing to try to implement. You're going to be required to report to DLCD, the state, on implementation progress, and required in eight years from the completion of your HPS to comment on its effectiveness in your next HPS. Strategies not identified in the HPS could still be done. So what if there's a good idea in two years? Well, you could amend your HPS and bring that into the HPS, or you could simply do it if it didn't need to be in the HPS. If it's not in your HPS, you're not held accountable to specific action by the state. So as I said, the state's in the process of changing how it's doing accountability. It's establishing a Housing Accountability and Production Office with the purpose of ensuring implementation of Goal 10, which is the housing goal, and coordination with state agencies. And I have to imagine here in Salem, you think coordination with state agencies, that might be really nice. A lot of our communities, different state agencies own different amounts of land where housing could develop if only the state agency would give up the land. And the Housing Accountability and Production Office is saying that they're really about providing assistance to cities to support housing development, such as model codes, ready-build plans, those kind of things, that can make development just a little bit easier. I'm hoping to see more funding out of the state for development of affordable housing as well as development of infrastructure. They seem pretty equal urgencies to me. There'll be other rules. It's not entirely clear to me yet what they'll be, because they're being written. So before I go on to talk about some of the different policy levers in more detail that we may be going into, do you have questions?
I'm not seeing any.
All right. So different types of policy levers that we're going to be talking about are regulatory, financial, and land. So you've got some existing examples of regulatory levers. So creating new zoning incentives or reducing building permitting barriers to developing housing. So you allow multifamily housing in more areas than you did back in 2013 and 14. You've reduced design requirements for multifamily housing, and so there's some flexibility in your standards as part of the multifamily housing design project. You'd have to ask Eunice or Lisa for more details about those. So those are some examples. What might we be considering? So expanding the ready-build program to include middle housing types. So those are housing types like cottage housing, townhouses, and different plexes, and more accessory dwelling unit designs. The state is expecting to be coming out with some more ready-build plans. Some of them, all of them, none of them, any of those could be appropriate for Salem. So you'd have a choice of adopting those or having other plans developed. So incentivizing housing to include accessible units. So looking at accessibility for people with disabilities, be that physical disabilities, mental disabilities, or other types of disabilities. What is it the city may be doing around incentivizing that? And I think that's a really interesting question. I haven't seen very powerful things, actions, yet on incentivizing accessible units, but there certainly could be. And revising regulations to promote more middle housing. So your middle housing can be, in some cases, affordable to people sort of in that middle range of incomes. They're not necessarily middle income and middle housing don't equate, but some of them can be a little bit more affordable. So things like townhouses and cottage housing, certainly plexes can be more affordable. All right, financial incentives, the money. You provide the multi-unit housing tax incentive program, and you provide a tax incentive for nonprofit-owned affordable housing, so that low-income housing and that sort of closer to middle-income housing, you have some tax incentives there. You exempt affordable housing and accessory dwelling units from system development charges. That makes it much more plausible to develop those. And of course, you've got federal funding, state funding that's provided for affordable housing, which I assume that the city will continue working with development partners to pursue. So you could create new urban renewal areas, such as the north waterfront and middle housing-focused urban renewal areas. Those can produce funds to support development of infrastructure that can support housing, can also go towards other city goals. You can look at supporting housing that's relatively affordable in those areas also. Explore the vertical housing tax abatement for mixed-use development, or consider a construction excise tax, which is a tax on new development of up to 1%. You can't exceed that, but it can certainly be below that, where you can use the funds from your construction excise tax to support affordable housing that's market rate as well as income-restricted affordable housing. There's not a lot of sources of funding for supporting housing, and that's one of the things we'll be talking with staff about a fair bit, and I'm sure you'll hear about that. You could revise system development charges to promote middle housing or other housing types that are a goal of the city.
We have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Nordech.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation. Question about the construction excise tax. So I'm getting the impression that if you find ways to make development cheaper, it's more likely to happen, and more likely to happen at a cheaper rate if you lower those costs. But if we're tacking on an extra tax for new development, it feels like that creates some mixed messages or some mixed incentives on housing.
It's definitely a trade-off, and I was going to mention trade-offs here in a few moments. So it's a trade-off to make higher-cost housing a little more expensive to fund lower-cost housing. I mean, honestly, that's what it is.
Are there examples of cities around Oregon that are doing that currently?
Certainly. Bend has a construction excise tax. I want to say it started around 0.3%, and it might be up to 0.5%, but I could be wrong about those. Eugene has a construction excise tax. There's a number of other cities that have construction excise tax. And what I've observed where they've been successful with this is they've worked with their development community to look at, the construction excise tax comes with some incentives as well as the tax to balance things out a little bit, but it definitely has an impact on development of new housing.
Do you have some examples of those incentives?
Your MPT, MTP is what you call it here. That's an example of that. Sometimes system development charge waivers, so where you're paying system development charge from your construction excise tax fund, sometimes those.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
Not seeing any.
Wrong direction. All right, so land. The city can purchase vacant or underutilized land and facilitate redevelopment into housing. You've certainly done that. I expect that you are currently doing that. I'm reminded of Hood River, which has used its urban renewal funds to purchase land and then to issue an RFP for a mixed-income housing development and secure funding for the infrastructure necessary to support it, et cetera, et cetera. I can't remember if Hood River, it was a few years ago that I worked there, had a construction excise tax or not, but they were pouring money into that, and they were planning on phase two, which was a different type of housing development that was going to be more multifamily and prefab, so less expensive, where they were looking at a little different approach there. Providing surplus land for affordable housing development. That surplus land could belong to the city currently, it could belong to the school district, the state, the feds, I don't know if the feds giving up land a lot, other organizations that are public, and that's where the city can act as a facilitator, if not have the control of the land specifically. And there's a lot of examples of that throughout the state. So then, if you're thinking about land, you go over to land trusts, community land trusts. When you look at affordable housing for homeownership, there's not very many ways to get into homeownership and make it affordable at, say, a household that has income of 60% of median family income, where they're looking at, I think the number I quoted a few whiles ago was $160,000, if that's what they can afford. So you can work with a community land trust that basically has a limited equity model. You can also work with cooperatives that aren't specifically a land trust, where there's a limited equity model to it also. So those are tied very much to having control of the land, and the city can do a variety of things.
Yes. Commissioner Heller.
Thank you. Now, what is a limited equity?
Limited equity means if you buy a house, and 10 years later, you sell the house, and the house appreciated $100,000 in that 10 years. If you don't have limited equity, you get the $100,000. If you do have a limited equity, you get some portion of the $100,000, but the housing is still more affordable to the next buyers. So the land trust is doing the work of making sure that the housing is affordable in perpetuity. Yes, ma'am? Okay, so some other strategies. Education and advocacy, so raising awareness of existing housing incentives and regulatory options, especially for your developers who may be a little less sophisticated. Advocating for manufactured home park preservation. So when you think about affordable, existing housing for homeownership, an awful lot of it is in manufactured housing, and an awful lot of that is in manufactured home parks, which are certainly something where you've seen the owner sell it for development of something else, say, multifamily housing or some other type of housing. There's a variety of ways that the city can participate in park preservation, ranging from convening to working with nonprofits that help do this, and if there's funding, to putting funding into that. And then you can advocate and plan for state infrastructure funding. So advocating, an awful lot of cities in their HPS have an advocacy action that is really about talking to the legislature and saying, will you do these things that will help us do our job better? Yes?
When you say manufactured home park preservation, can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. In Newport, there was a manufactured home park that the owner decided to sell. There's a lot of state regulations around how long you have to give existing residents before selling it, what you have to do for those residents. And those residents had time then to work with a nonprofit like CASA or St. Vincent de Paul of Lane County. I know they've both done these things across the state, where they've helped the existing owners buy the manufactured home park.
Thank you.
And then collaboration and partnerships. So I haven't talked about partnerships, but an awful lot of the things that we've talked about here require firm and significant partnerships to achieve. So convening housing forums, working directly with your housing development partners, working with, say, a land trust or other developers. And then the question is, what else? And that really leads into our set of questions for you. Do you have input on the ideas and actions that we're talking about here? Are there actions not mentioned that you'd like to make sure that we're considering? Are there actions that we mentioned that you think we should not be considering? And I feel like I should invite Eunice up to answer any questions when they come up about what you're already doing, I'm sure.
Councilor Nordech.
So I do have some thoughts. First of all, I want to piggyback on what Council Nishiyoka said. Last year, we hosted a town hall for all of South Salem, and the protection of manufactured parks came up during that, and it's come up before. What we're hearing through the grapevine is that that park you mentioned on the coast is not the only one at risk.
Yep.
And, you know, and so I, too, was wondering, what did you mean by advocacy? Because surely, there must be something more than we can say than, don't do that. Please don't raise the rates.
Yeah.
And moreover, I love the idea of the residents pooling their resource together and buying the park outright, but... the park outright, but they're low-income tenants.
Yes.
I don't know how realistic that is for a lot of groups, so...
It certainly is difficult. So one of the cities, the things that the city can do, and I don't know that this is a good or bad idea in Salem, just putting it out there, is have a zone that is manufactured home park zone. And so you apply that where you've got manufactured home parks, and then to redevelopment, to redevelop it, certainly that zone has to be changed. So that's putting a barrier in to redevelopment of the manufactured home park. I know some cities have done that.
And if I'm, and others can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it wasn't necessarily that they wanted to re, you know, bulldoze it and make it into something else entirely. They just wanted to raise the rates significantly.
Right.
So the new owners want to keep the RV park, the manufactured home park, but they just want to get as much money out of it as possible, which is what puts these residents who are already at great risk. I mean, a lot of these RVs, they're barely habitable.
Yes, they are.
They're barely, questionably habitable in many cases, so they can't simply sell it and buy a new one or relocate. And then, of course, there are the accessibility issues that you mentioned. So I'd love to look for us to dive deep into that, because that's a very vulnerable population and dovetails nicely with the groups you've mentioned who are at great risk, our persons with disabilities list, our persons above age 65. I would be interested in us looking further into that.
And just so you know, I happen to have done a little bit of research on this. Senate bill, I think it was 611, put, Senate bill 608 a few years ago, and now 611, put caps on the amount that manufactured home park rents can be raised by, but it's like 10% a year. So it's a higher cap, so...
Other questions or feedback on the questions that were posed? Commissioner Faat?
Thank you. I have a question about the, thinking about tax exemptions and incentivizing development in that way. Is there a way, or have you seen examples where you could use like community-enhancing project elements? So like a park, for example, or something that's a little bit of a give-back as a way to reduce the taxable portion of a project? Because if we over-incentivize, we're simply reducing our capacity to provide livable communities.
I can't think of one off the top of my head, but that doesn't mean that there aren't any, and so that's something we can look into. I know in other instances, you have development agreements where the developer agrees to do something and, you know, gets benefit from it. I'm thinking about, you know, density bonuses, certainly something. You may be able to do something like that around affordability. I don't know that it would be a big enough incentive.
So related to that, also just thinking about the way, and I think someone maybe brought this up earlier, also related to that incentivizing, it would concern me that if we are offering too many things to developers to develop market-rate housing, or even, you know, affordable housing projects typically have protections in place to ensure that they are long-holds and they're not immediately turned over to private equity or REITs.
Yes.
Is there a way to, from the city or policy standpoint, also mitigate that?
Well, the first thing is to work with the organizations that already have those kind of requirements. So for instance, if you're working with a developer who's using low-income housing tax credits, that has to be affordable for 30 or 60 years. Somebody else is doing the work of doing that already. If you're working with a community land trust, then they're doing the work of ensuring that housing stays affordable over the long period of time. I've seen some cities try to do this themselves, and it takes a lot of staff time. So I think the first thing is figure out somebody else who will do it for you, or have it a particularly limited duration, like your MTP is, I believe it's a 10-year tax exemption, so...
Councilor Gwen.
I wasn't going to ask a question. I was just going to say, when it comes to that manufactured housing, some of our parks are up to $1,000 a month for park rent. So I too would like to see something more done about that, but I don't know what the city can do.
Well, that's something we can certainly dive into more.
Councilor Nordech.
Thank you. On an unrelated topic, you may have seen in the news Congresswoman Bonamici has proposed a bill which would take project turnkey nationwide. And what I've noticed in it, I mean, the article itself says that she's perhaps skeptical about whether it would actually pass this year. What it would do, just in case you're curious, is it would allow, it would allocate $1 billion annually for pass-through grants to buy vacant buildings and convert them into housing or shelter, provide rent support and assistance with security deposits and down payments, and contribute to down payments, repair, and expand emergency shelters. All that sounds amazing to me. I'm sure the federal government will get right on it. What I do find, you know, a kernel of hope that I have for this is she points out that she has a Republican co-sponsor and that there is growing bipartisan awareness. And I feel that, you know, affordability of housing isn't, should be at least, a nonpartisan issue.
That's right.
It impacts everybody equally, you know. Rents don't, you know, landlords don't care what your political affiliation is. They care whether you can keep up with 10% per year rent increases, right? So I think the project turnkey has already been effective here in Salem. There are multiple project turnkey projects in this area, and I'm in favor of us continuing to support those more generally. And that's a statewide thing, should be a federal thing. Imagine if the federal government thought housing was something they could actually really, really sink their teeth into, beyond what they're already doing. So anyway, that's more food for thought, I suppose.
So I think you mentioned $1 billion, and I will say that $1 billion isn't what it used to be. All of these things are so very expensive. I'm not sure if Salem would want a housing production strategy action of pursue federal grants, because you're going to do that anyway. And so we'd probably want that as, you know, a recommendation that sits in there of, of course, you're going to pursue federal grants. I didn't mention, because I forgot to mention it, that we're coordinating this with your update to your consolidated plan, so we're thinking about your federal programs and the actions that would be in that, that would be appropriate to have in your housing production strategy. So we're doing that coordination also.
Councilor Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the outstanding presentation tonight. I didn't hear anything that I want to get rid of. I mean, it sounds like it's well-thought-out and pretty well-presented. I guess, like, I don't want to go into, like, you know, specific details on each of the things you brought up, but I have heard even before on council the concept of the construction excise tax, and it sounds like, you know, our, similar cities of our size and growth in terms of Eugene and Bend have done it. So, you know, using that as just one example of, like, how feasible is that and what would it take for our community to do it, with the caveat that, like, our staff are stretched so thin, like, we've got 1,000 less general fund, you know, employees than Eugene does, and they have nearly the identical population. So like, you know, how do we, we start to, you know, get the low-hanging fruit and move forward?
What I will say about your staff, and understand that Eugene's a client of mine also currently, is your staff is, there may be not many of them, but man, are they scrappy. And it seems like decision-making in Salem is perhaps easier than decision-making in Eugene. So one of the things we might do, if it made sense, is have some discussions with the staff in Bend and Eugene who implemented and have been managing the CET programs. I know Bend was one of the earliest ones to implement this, about, you know, what are their lessons learned? What would they do differently if they were doing it now? Honestly, some of my colleagues may well have had those discussions, and I have a lot of colleagues. I don't have all their brains in my head, so...
Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things would be great if you could take into consideration are all these incentives and ideas, but from neighboring cities, because we're not an island, you know?
Oh, yeah.
People are actually, as they're looking at to develop projects, they're looking around, you know, and definitely in areas they're comfortable with, and, you know, they can just look at Salem, like, they could look at Almsville. So I haven't seen that comparison anywhere, so it'd be nice to have that. Now, northeast Salem though is extremely, it's difficult to develop because there are no, not a larger parcels available, and then we're surrounded by farmland, you know. So we're going to have a unique strategy for areas that are already, you know, limited space. You know, what are we going to do with these? Because some of these projects, if you're talking about penciling out, they're not going to pencil out if they're under half an acre or one acre. You know, part of a project where I think it's under one acre, and we wanted to look at affordable housing options, and they're like, come back to us when you find a parcel that's two acres or bigger. Okay, well, that's the end of it in northeast Salem. I mean, it's going to be really hard, you know, to fulfill that, so what other strategies do we have? And, you know, also, you mentioned densification a little bit earlier, but some of these things that the state are pushing down on us, where it's limiting, or it's reducing parking or no parking, people, and those incomes are buying houses that you mentioned, but it's three or four of them, putting their money together to buy a property, and they need space. So I'm always wondering, how can the state say, we're taking equity into consideration, but no parking? And, you know, a lot of the families I work with, they're hard workers, they have landscaping company, you know. So I always wondered, where's the disconnect? You know, where's that message getting lost? Because the people here are paying the price, you know. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that last piece, I'm sorry. But we can certainly look at approaches to support small infill development projects. In terms of comparison cities, what are other cities doing? I'll say that all cities over 10,000 people are going to be required, or have already done, not many have already done, similar housing production strategies. So a lot of the same questions are being asked across the Willamette Valley, in the Portland region, all across Oregon.
I'm wondering if there are any programs or ideas that we could put into place that properties that are inside the urban growth boundary but outside the city, to incentivize them? Because I think in northeast Salem, we do have quite a few pieces of property that are open and available in the UGB but outside the city that would be prime for development, but we need them, you know, for whatever reason, they're not there. So I'm wondering other incentive programs we can do to get those pieces developed.
I think you're asking about ways to incentivize annexation?
Right.
Okay.
And development.
And without knowing anything, I would imagine one of the first questions is about infrastructure and getting that development ready and how much that's going to cost.
Right. It's kind of, I think, though, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing, like, you know, so we're not going to get infrastructure ready to go if it's not, to an area that's not in the city, or they're, you know, so which comes first?
Got to have that golden pot of money? State keep promising, yeah?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Faat.
That won't be our answer, actually. That's just...
Well, I thought of one of the things that we could do with the state is to get them to stop imposing so many unfunded mandates. That would be a strategy. But that's another thought. Anyway, Commissioner Faat.
So along those lines, did you look much at the impact of workforce housing and having that located more adjacent or proximate to our service industry areas of the city? Because it seems like a lot of affordable housing often gets pushed to the perimeters of cities, and when it comes to accessibility and equity, if we take people who maybe don't have a car or the means to purchase one, are also now living in a part of the city that is likely not serviced by public transit.
So we haven't looked at any of this yet because we haven't done that work. This very question is one that we've been discussing with the state as they're working on revising their new programs and giving a fair bit of thought to. It's not just transit, it's other access to, you can call it opportunity more broadly. Certainly, that is something that we can look at, and I think that's about where do you have land that's zoned to allow the kind of housing that we're talking about, be it multifamily apartment-style housing, middle housing can also be some of that kind of housing. So ensure that you have land that's zoned, and this concept of development-ready, which isn't a concept that you have to comply with right now, but where you have infrastructure already or more easily can get infrastructure, maybe there's an opportunity to prioritize some things related to land with those characteristics.
So thinking, I think that's a really great point. And with our Salem, I think we did a really, and by we, I mean our staff and everyone who've put most of the effort into that, did a really great job ensuring that we have rezoned a lot of properties so that they do allow for mixed use. So is there a way that as a city, we can start to prioritize affordable housing, multifamily, and middle housing closer in and in those areas, and allow the market-rate housing to explore the further out areas?
And I think that's part of what the market analysis that we're working on is intended to answer. So I don't have an answer for you right now, but I expect to.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Rhodes.
You touched on a topic of small developers versus commercial development, and I know that's kind of a big, big topic, but what have you seen locally in Oregon that helps incentivize local development?
A lot of it's partnerships or how the city can work with small developers. So do you have, and this takes staff capacity, do you have staff who can essentially shepherd through some of the small developers through your development process? I'm not sure. You may well already have that. I'm not sure if that's viable with your existing city staff. So that's one opportunity. I'm sure there are others, providing, you know, informational resources, that kind of thing. But I'm sure there are other more meaningful things that we can look into.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Tritt.
Thank you for the presentation, and I do want to say thank you to staff, the staff at the city. All of you back here are tremendously helpful. I deal with all of them every day, and I just want to go on the record of saying the city of Salem is not an obstructionist, which is why we are here. We're here to help find solutions, so I just want to say thank you for that. On the flip side of that coin, I will say that affordable housing is simply not affordable to build.
Yeah.
From a developer's perspective, and Salem is rich with qualified, capable, proven, and tested developers, but to get the affordable housing component mixed in with the middle and upper rental and purchase rates, there has to be somewhat of a rising tide effect. And so, yes, affordable housing is needed, but more housing across the spectrum is needed. And what I've seen in my line of work is that Portland has long been the mainstay of housing development, but is kind of moving down a few notches in the eyes of large-scale, national type of developers. And they're moving their focus and their sights to tertiary markets and other communities, Salem and Eugene and Bend, but I've seen a lot of primary focus on Salem. The problem is, we don't really know how quite to sell Salem from a development standpoint to attract this outside development. And I would like to also state that development kind of has a connotation, developer, of being somewhat of a bad word, but in a lot of instances, they are the ones that bring the housing and the infrastructure and the partners and the joint venture and the public-private relationships to town to create that rising tide for all segments of housing. And so as we work through some of these programs and your report and your analysis, which is tremendously helpful, thank you very much, finding a way to incentivize local and outside investment into Salem, I think is going to be critical in that. And I could rattle off the usual suspects, oh, we need to waive SDCs, or we need tax abatements, or we need special zonings or jurisdictions. Those are all great concepts, but to be able to attract somebody or some group who can bear the burden of, just simply the holding cost of holding a property prior to development is a tall order. And so I don't really necessarily have a question, more or less. I'm eager to learn more about how this works and the solutions we come to on it, so...
Thank you.
There you go.
Other questions or comments? Councilor Hoy.
Thank you. My question, I, you know, I have heard considerable... My question, I, you know, I have heard considerable commentary from developers and builders about the permitting process being a hindrance. How is that examined and how is that changed, should it need to be? Not only for, you know, for affordability, but also in terms of, you know, time is money. So is there an answer to that question?
Well, certainly, it's something we talk to developers about, and I will be honest that everywhere I've worked, outside of Oregon included, that's always brought up. And so the question is, are there specific things that can be identified that can be simplified? I'll take design requirements, and I know nothing about Salem's design requirements, so let me just start there. But let's say we were, I was just in Jackson, Wyoming. They're a lot like sisters. Let's say you had really strong design standards. I think there is a question about the community benefit of design standards as it relates to the trade-off of getting development, that's more development and more affordable development. I'm only picking on design standards because it's an easy one to pick on. So I think we would do some review. In this process, you're not actually necessarily solving all the problems, you're identifying the problems, and you're making an action plan to solve them. So if it was apparent that there was some permitting or other planning process that was difficult, we might have an HPS action to dig into that and figure it out. Because that will take considerable community input beyond which we can do here.
So we actually have a process in place currently that's doing a review of that?
Okay.
We actually, there's a, through the Bloomberg Harvard Leadership Program, we have a, we're looking, we're in the data track that's, and their project right now is looking at that entire process and ways to use data-driven resources to improve that. And we actually have a Harvard fellow here right now, or a fellow from, is it Harvard? Yeah, Harvard fellow is actually here to do some community engagement and to look at developing data that will help inform that issue. And so stay tuned for more about all of that in the next couple of months.
So it may well be that there's some recommendations that come out of that that just get brought right into the housing production strategy.
Right, right.
I think any idea that's a good idea is a good idea, no matter who it's from.
Great. Commissioner Phillips.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for the update on the work already been done through the Bloomberg Harvard initiative. Yeah, I would say I really have heard from several small developers that are trying to, like, you know, build Ward 3, that, you know, when they're not used to building in other cities or elsewhere in Oregon, you know, they're surprised at how long things take. I think serving, you know, on council, I'm less surprised, and I get a sense from the developers who develop here and in Portland, for example, that we're a lot easier, I think. It goes quicker anecdotally, from what I've heard, but for those smaller, you know, developers, it's a challenge. So I want to try to address that. I mean, I think it's something that, you know, I'd like to really try to encourage, but at the same time, like, where do we get the resources to do that? Because I feel like a lot of this is just, we're bumping up against, you know, the absolute numbers of the constraints of our staff. So, you know, that's, not to, like, loop back on just one issue, because there's lots of things discussed tonight that I liked a lot, but the construction excise tax specifically, where you've got the balancing, like, you use the higher end to, like, kind of supplement the more affordable housing and things like that. It just, you know, in a way, I see it could pay for itself. But I agree, you can't do it without buy-in from the developer community, so, you know, I just want to figure that out. And so that's one thing, and then I have another comment, but I don't know if you want to respond to anything I've said so far, but I have one more thing to talk about.
What you said makes sense to me.
Yeah. The other thing was just, you know, I heard one of our colleagues, I think, on the Planning Commission tonight, talk about, you know, the idea that some of the larger private equity, you know, forces on this planet are getting into buying houses at scale. And, I mean, we talked a little bit about how there's, it feels like there's an uncoupling of housing being occupied and still having value for a shareholder. So, you know, that's deeply concerning. But I've read articles about that, you know, even 2016, 2015. So I don't know what we can do as a medium-sized, you know, big, medium-sized city to kind of counteract that. Like, you know, I think that private equity has its limits, and it gets me kind of concerned when I hear things like, the value of housing is uncoupled from actually housing people. That makes me nervous. So, yeah.
And I agree.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Is that it?
That's all. Staff?
All right. So if we have further thoughts, we can get them to Ms. Kim. Counselor, did you have something? No, you look, okay. All right. Well, if there's nothing else before us, then we are adjourned.